Same here.
Okay, so why don't we call the meeting to order? And so you've been through this, at least partially through this already. And what we've got, Bethany informed us, we've got a whole new petition. Right? So we're going to start from from scratch on this. And I think you you know that we've got four members of the board, full board is five, which means that if to have the 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 request that you you've requested granted, you'd have to have a unanimous vote for for in favor to grant the grant the variance. And with that, you you want to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, let's let's read the notice. For the record, Nina, do you want to read the notice?
Yep. The Eastside Meadows zoning Board of Appeals will hold a pub-
Nina, you're frozen, at least you're frozen on my end.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, none of us.
Good now?
Yep, you're back.
All right, KCV 2021 dash six, a petition for variance under Eastside Meadows zoning bylaws, dimensional and density regulations table three point two for a twenty plus or minus foot relief from a thirty-five yard foot side yard setback for a fifteen by thirty foot deck and five by thirty foot area of the primary dwelling at one oh eight Old Farm Road. Assessors partial ID forty-two dash twenty-one dash twenty-seven in the Residence AA zoning district. I look at Sodi Inc. CEO Ralph Capua, sixty Blueberry Hill Road, Long Meadow, Mass. Oh, one one oh six. This was published on eleven eight.
You froze up again.
Froze up. So Nina, thank you. Nina, when I went to it was published and it was it was published in accordance with all the rules that went to all of the the butters.
Yeah, published eleven eighteen and eleven twenty-four and a butters were notified.
Excellent. All right. So as we said before, we only have four members present. So to grant the variance, it has to be unanimous vote. You can wait for a full board where it would only have to be four to one. And the petitioners said that he'd like to move forward. So how we'll conduct the hearing, the petitioner will present the the reasons for the the variance. Anybody else speaking in favor can state their name? And any reasons why they are for it? Then we will have anybody that wants to speak against it. And then we'll close the hearing and discuss and make a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Quill, I assume that you are speaking here in favor and would like to present the the variance request.
Yes. So as discussed previously, this is a very difficult lot. There is an intermittent stream that cuts the specific building envelope literally in half. Actually, probably even worse than that. There is a very restricted building envelope for the house. Actually, we only have maybe about thirty feet in total for the majority of the building envelope for the house. There is a twenty-eight hundred minimum square foot requirement in that neighborhood. So literally filling the entire building envelope left to right with a two-car garage and a house with a ranch. That is what I'm building. It just gives me a hair over twenty-eight hundred square feet. And no more than that and no room for a deck or anything else because of where the house is actually located, which is right up against, literally, as you can tell by the plan. It literally is right up against the thirty-five foot setback line. So, I mean, I can't put a deck on this house and I can't do a patio because there is a fifteen-foot grade differential from right to left. And by looking at the plans, you could see the 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 grade differentials. How significant they are going from right to left. And when I say right to left, if you're facing the proposed house from old pasture looking into the lot, you'll notice an elevation of three thirty-five on the right side and an elevation of three twenty on the left side. So even if I wanted to put a patio, my retain and the retaining walls would be taller than my neighbor's yard fence. Which I I mean, it's just it becomes very difficult to do.
All right, and you are requesting how many foot variance?
Twenty.
Twenty. In total, and that'll that'll include both the house as well as the-
That'll that'll that will include a small section of the house. Only a five-foot section by the length of the dining area and the kitchen and a fifteen-foot deck. Fifteen foot deep, yes.
Okay. Any questions by the board members?
Sounds to me as though you have a property that who's whose shape and whose soils don't permit compliance with the bylaw to build the structure that you intend. So does appear to me as though he's a candidate for a variance under under those under those two scenarios. He he can't put this, he can't cite this house on this lot and conform to zoning because of an intermittent stream, which I would argue is soils. And and the topography of the property.
All right. Nina or Bethany, is anybody else out there to speak in favor of granting the variance?
We do have one a butter. I can bring them in at this.
There are five letters of support, I believe, that you guys received.
They should be coming in. See. There you go.
You can unmute. That'd be great.
Ms. Armisen, if you can hear us, you need to unmute.
Mary Chris? Can you unmute? Bethany, can we unmute for her?
Um, I can't. I can just ask her to unmute.
But why don't you do that by text so that we can?
Not seeing anything from her.
Did she did she raise her hand? Maybe she's just in the audience listening and doesn't intend to speak.
She had sent in some material after hours, so I think she is planning on speaking.
Well, why don't we carry on with this? And if she appears, that'll be great. Otherwise, you know, there's only so much we can do here. Is there anybody else that wants to speak perhaps?
There's no one else in the attendees list tonight.
What were the materials that she had sent in?
She had some concerns about the difference in the Conservation Commission Plan versus the plan that was sent in with the variance application. I don't think the commission is concerned with the new with the revision to the plan because it does not encroach on the wetlands. It's actually further away from the wetlands or on the other side.
If I if I may, if I may interject for a moment, I did have another meeting with conservation regarding the twenty-foot variance that I was requesting, and they had no problems with it. Especially, you know, citing that is actually it's even further away from the wetlands. They were okay with it and they voted. They voted for it.
Okay, so is-
We're in a favor.
Just write in a phone number. I'm wondering if that's Mary Chris.
And we actually have installed the call the covert already. And the Mike Marco, who helped design the covert and was the lead on the you who's the lead wetland specialist came out to the site visit and was very happy with how the covert came out. How, you know, there's an open bed. It's a three box. It's a three-sided covert. So the base of the stream has not been affected at all. I mean, the water's flowing. So there's no issues with any any backups anywhere. And this isn't even part of the the variance, so to speak. This was a conservation thing and you know, we did everything that they wanted.
All right. Well, I mean, without without the presentation of of anything from Mary Chris, I don't know. She's had the opportunity to go off of mute. Are there any other questions? I see a picture now of Mary. Oh.
There she is.
You're still on mute.
You're still on mute.
I understand. Your system is not compatible with Zoom Gov. Which I don't understand because I thought you guys would be required to use Zoom Gov. Because that's what I use.
Hold it. Excuse me, Zoom what?
Government, the government iteration so that you don't get snipes or whatever. So I have to use a government version of Zoom. And unfortunately, it's not compatible with yours. So I can see you and I can hear you. I cannot unmute. I can't chat or anything. So I'm reconnected by my phone.
All right, well, you're you're on now. If you could state your name and add this for the record.
Yeah. So this is Mary Chris Arnesson and the owner of twenty-four old pasture drive. I attended the meeting last month as well. My husband's with me as well, kind of here in the background. So I wanted to go through. I did present some materials. They were late being submitted just at the end of the business day. So I can talk through them verbally. I'd intended to share my screen with you as we went through this. But like I said, I'm not compatible. For some reason, I'll try to reconnect with my computer. So as I've reviewed the documentation that was presented in the new submittal, which I obtained from the town hall today, the zoning variance reason for request is stated earlier for two reasons. One is the multiple physical constraints which are around the wetlands and topographical grades. And the second is the restrictive covenants of a minimum of twenty-eight hundred square feet of living space. So I've reviewed the covenants and I've reviewed the plot of land that exists today in the subdivision and who has those variances already. So I want to go through a couple of things. The Prospect Hills homeowners restrictive covenants require minimum square footage living space of not less than twenty-eight hundred. And it goes on to state a minimum square footage requirement in excess of four thirty-four hundred square feet. It allows only one detached, single-family dwelling and private garage appertaining there too. And all residential dwellings shall have an enclosed garage that can house not less than two automobiles. I reviewed the the plot in the area for the subdivision. And currently, there are five homes within this neighborhood that do not make meet the twenty-eight hundred square foot requirement. Certainly have been exceptions made previously to the covenants of the subdivision. To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that the property owner, either previous or current, have ever asked for a variance on the square footage from the from the homeowners association. Two of the properties are directly across the street from one oh eight Far Old Farm. The other is on the diagonal on Old Farm. There's another home on Old Farm. And then one on Prospect Hills, including the next door neighbor to the to the applicant's previous residence. So I wonder what kind of raise that up first as a as a discussion point. The request is related to the limited size and proximity of the building envelope due to the side yard setback. And the requirements, as was stated, on wetlands has caused the inability to construct any form of a deck. A deck, obviously, based on the guidelines, is not allowed to encroach in the required setback. So my concern is that the request is for a fifteen-foot side setback, which is very close to other residential dwellings. The second comment that I have is that there's reference throughout the application to the ability to access the usable lawn area. But I haven't seen any proposal about the staircase and whether or not the staircase will extend beyond footprint of the deck, which is the fifteen-foot extension onto the other five-foot exemption for the home. So I'd like to know where those are proposed and if they'll further go into that space. The statement in the request is about, as a builder, how can I construct a house with no deck and access to usable lawn area and still be able to sell it? You know, that statement in the application is a little concerning to us because a lot of this has been based on the premise that it's a ranch-style home for the builder's occupancy. And then this implies that it's being built to be to be sold. Now, obviously, any builder is not required to reside on the property, but it is part of the application. So I wanted to raise it. There is a dwelling at sixty-one Prospect Hills Drive, which is also part of the neighborhood that is a deck. It's actually a true second-story deck. It's not just a variance of a few feet. It is a true exit of a home. It does not have a staircase, so therefore it doesn't have access access to usable lawn area. So although I can understand, you know, the desire to have that access, it's really not a requirement. It's not a subdivision or a covenant requirement. The second question that I have, and I know it's not directly related to the zoning variance, but it is a concern that I have is because there have been cross-communications between what's been presented to the Conservation Committee and what's been presented to this committee. And obviously, we're both advisors ultimately to the Planning Commission. So the question is, the house proposal, which was originally presented to the Conservation Commission, that required a review be done on a two-story home that had a smaller building envelope. Since then, there's been they've gone back and had some discussion, but there hasn't been a true presentation to the Conservation Commission about the larger building envelope being used in the full amount. The second question is in there, there's a rest of reference in the proposed variance to a financial constraint on install because of installation on oven box covert, which I just don't really think should be considered as part of a zoning variance requirement. The proposal that was made back in October or the update, I shouldn't say it was a proposal, was an update to one that had previously been filed by the previous owner of the property. The new one that was filed by Sodi indicates that there's a request to amend the order of conditions and request for approval to install a deck and a single detached garage in the rear of the house. So this drawing has also been turned into the City Hall or Town Hall, but it has made no reference here of the zoning commission. In that application there and that reference there, it indicates that both structures will be at a minimum seventy-five feet from wetlands. But it again, now in that presentation, it reflects that building a house for the occupancy by the builder an indication that a paid patio cannot be installed due to severe grading issues. But the concern that I have is that a proposal in that meeting included locations of a deck, but also detached garage. It's not previously been proposed. So when I look at the two proposals that are basically both on file with the Planning Committee at this point or your subcommittees of the planning team, they are two different drawings and they're two different representations of footprint of the house as well as this proposed outlaw building. So, you know, I don't want to take a lot of your time tonight. I know you you originally were supposed to have a second topic. But I'm just, I'm concerned that a lot of these details are kind of I feel like each time I ask the question, I get more detail. I learn more about it. And I'm just not crisp on what the ask is.
Oh, if I may interject, if I may interject, I I did try to set up a meeting Mary Chris with you and your husband prior to this to just address any concerns that you may have. So we could talk about this and you know, to no avail, that didn't happen. We were gonna try to get together sometime, you know, between last week and the weekend and today. And I didn't hear back from anybody. That being said, if we want to discuss the the building envelope, if we will, what was approved with the Conservation Commission, which again is not part of the zoning Board of Appeals, there is a an approved building envelope. So if in looking at the plan, you could see the entire area is outlined of what is approved by the Conservation Commission. I am staying within those boundaries. I know that there is a twenty-eight hundred square foot minimum requirement for for that neighborhood. It's recorded at the Registry of Deeds. If other people have somehow skated through that, well, that's, you know, that's for them to go through. I am not about to try to spend a half a million or more on putting in something smaller than twenty-eight hundred square feet that is required and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And then someone come back to me and say, oh, by the way, you need to tear your house down because or you need to do something else because it's not twenty-eight hundred square feet. So that takes care of that.
Right, can I just, I I don't mean-
As far as the stairs, as far as stairs?
Ralph, Ralph, can I, can I, I I I think we ought to probably more particularly address Mary Chris's concerns. I I'm not, they were I I lost track of how many there were, two or three, but you just, I I don't, I I'm afraid this is going to turn into a it won't be productive unless we just sort of hold this thing to the 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 basics, which is you've requested and submitted plans to be granted a special permit and that, excuse me, a variance so that you can encroach into a setback to allow a certain footprint. And that this has either been approved or will be approved by the Conservation Commission. I would imagine any approval we grant tonight would be subject to the Conservation Commission's approval. At least that's my that's my guess, but the the idea that private land restrictions in a development somehow weigh into the zoning board is something I'm not at all clear on. And I don't I I'm not particularly interested unless I'm told that I need to be concerned with it. I'm not particularly interested in what a HOA Association's requirements are.
Other than, other than Dan, what that they almost by definition define what is consistent with the neighborhood, right? Whether whether or not other other homeowners have have violated the restrictive covenant.
Well, that's what I mean. I I don't want to get into a debate.
That's our, that's our decision.
As to whether somebody did or should pursue a house that is is under their climate, over their climate. You know, we're a zoning board, not a not a not a, you know, not a commission. We're a zoning Board of Appeals. And we we need to sort of judicially rule on an applicant's decision. We need to, we need to listen to objections that that weigh on the merits of the case.
Yeah. So I I think I heard three things, Dan. I heard one was that the covenants, that there were other potential violations of the restrictive covenants of the association. No, I I don't I don't think that that's our policing duty.
Right.
The other thing that I heard was the staircase, and I think, Mr. Cool, you're gonna, you're gonna address the staircase question. And then the 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 second, the final thing, the third thing that I think I'd like to get your at least input on is the potential inconsistencies in the in what was presented to the Conservation Commission. If you could just respond to that with what was presented here.
Okay, well, as far as the Conservation Commission, I don't believe that there were any inconsistencies. If if there is a separate detached, single-car garage, which I would like to do a three-car garage, but that can't happen because I'll be, I would be asking for even more variance. So I opted to not ask for an a greater variance. And if I choose to do a third garage, which would be two attached and one single and talking to the building inspector, it can go in the upper right corner of the lot. As long as I'm, it's-
But Ralph, aren't we trying, aren't we looking at a plan that you had submitted for approval?
Yeah, so a single car garage has nothing to do with this.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, let's talk about the plans that have been submitted for this evening's hearing. What they show, the relief that you want should be based on those plans.
And that's what I was trying to do.
And if Mary Chris is arguing that the plans that have been submitted for this evening's consideration differ from other plans that she's seen, then I I'm not sure how that even matters to us because this is the zoning Board of Appeals, but but maybe it does. And if that's the case, why don't you address that rather than what you might do in the future or what you wish you could have done?
Okay, so the plan that I submitted is what I am planning on building, which is a ranch. Okay, that the building, I'm sorry, the the outline that you see within the building envelope is the outline of the foundation. So there's a five-foot deep by thirty-foot section of the house that I'm asking for for relief and a fifteen-foot by thirty-foot deck.
Okay, and Mary and Chris, what what would be the difference between what he has just described and what you see?
The drawings that have been presented to the Commission for Conservation relate to an original proposal that was done for a two-story style home with a smaller footprint. And my concern is that you have two committees within the same and within the same parent, if you will, that are getting two different versions of what is being proposed.
Well, irrespective of which commission ruled, e- either both have to be satisfied.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? The zoning board can't give anybody a a relief here that is contrary to the law or to a decision that the Conservation Commission's already made in the same, and the reverse is also true. So I I I don't, generally speaking, boards like this, you know, we're not, we're not a subsidiary of a corporation. We're an independent zoning Board of Appeals. And generally, we make when our decisions are made, they have to be subject to whatever other jurisdictions may apply. Am I, am I right about that, Charles?
I think so. Yeah, and I mean, what we are, what we are voting on is what we're seeing today, right? If if something, if something was filed a year ago, ten years ago, it it's, it doesn't really matter to what we are voting on, the variance request that we're voting.
But I believe that you're voting on, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
I believe that you're voting, though, based on an advice that the Conservation Committee has revealed, really, excuse me, reviewed and approved the plan.
I I believe, I I think, I think what I heard was a statement saying that the whatever, whatever was 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 talked about with the the commissioner, the Conservation Commission was even less intrusive on wetlands than what was originally presented. And I think, Mr. Cool, you you you've made the statement that you've discussed that with someone in the Conservation Commission.
Oh, I actually went in front of the board.
Yeah.
I I went in front of the board and they and they voted on it and they approved it. The the plan that is that the plan that everybody is looking at was an original markup that was done by Michael Mako back in two thousand twelve. I, that was not done by me. There is a building envelope that is approved for the construction of a single-family home within that building.
One that you planned to build and that's the plans that you submitted, correct?
Right. I submitted the plan that was from Conservation, showing the entire building envelope, grading and everything else. And within that building envelope, there was a house where there was a box, you know, proposed structure within that approved building envelope.
Okay. Okay. I, I'm pretty.
It was a two story, but I'm building a single story. It's still within that building envelope.
Okay. The, the, the last point that I think I heard, um, was the, the stairwell that on the, on the.
The staircase?
The staircase, yeah.
The staircase is gonna be, so if you are. On the deck facing James Dial's property. Okay. Which would be the lot directly behind me. The staircase is going to be to the right of the deck. So when it comes down, it actually will come down. Towards the garage side and not further into. The backyard towards the existing fence that is there.
So it will not, it'll, it'll still be within the variance.
Absolutely.
So we're being asked to, to grant a variance with a defined intrusion into a setback. We know what it is. The plans show it. We understand why you're requesting it. And the conservation commission has approved generally what, what you're doing and naturally. Whether we give you this tonight or not, I mean, i- if you, if you were to get this, you're gonna have to comply with conservation commissions. Bylaws regardless.
Yes. I, I mean, and quite frankly, the. The, the reason why the house is shaped the way it is, is because of conservation.
Right.
And you know, I, I, I don't enjoy having. A, a thirty foot deep house at most.
Right.
You know, I, I'm making sacrifices to the interior layout of the house as it is.
Right.
Through the chair or vice chair in this case, um, I think what might help answer Mary's question is. When people go before the conservation commission, um, to build a home. The main concern is where the limit of work line is, not necessarily what the house, um, will look like. So it's very common that. The house changes, um, if the ownership changes or anything like that, the main concern is just that limit of work line is maintained.
I should thank you, Bethany. That was the correct way of describing it. And there is a limit of work line. On that plan that is approved and I am staying within that limit of work line. With the exception of that slight variance that I'm asking for.
With the exception of the variance is the point.
Correct.
It's not staying within the work line that's been approved by the commission. You're asking for it with this zoning variance.
Right. He's, what he's asking for is a variance to allow him to encroach further onto a setback. That the, that he, that he would otherwise be able to do, but he's not encroaching into the work limits at all. Based on my, my understanding is he's encroaching less with this plan than, than, than it was initially shown.
I, I guess my question is, is that a true statement? Have you reviewed both drawings next to one another to see that that's a true statement?
It is a true statement. Absolutely is a true.
I'm asking, I'm sorry, I'm asking.
Well, whether it is or whether it isn't, isn't, isn't even something that the board would, would turn itself with. It's conservation commission issue. Was brought up, so I'm mentioning it, but then.
Page three of the material that I'm looking at, it, it very much appears that it's what, within the scope of the work line.
That's my question. Yeah, thank you. I was asking if that was reviewed.
Okay. Um, is there any other evidence to present either for or against the granting of the request really? Bethany, anybody else in the audience?
No, there's not.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Does anybody have a motion one way or the other? And reasons behind it?
Well, I'll make a motion that, uh. That a variance be granted. Uh, I, I don't have one written out in front of me that I could read, which would be my preference, but, uh, that, that a variance be granted. Given that the, uh, petitioner's properties shape and soils do not permit. Literal enforcement of the bylaw and that. Uh, the, 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 the relief granted will not result in construction that. Is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
That's second, I'm just adding topography too. So shapes, soils, the topography as well.
Right.
All right. Well, maybe we'll have, James, do you want to, do you want to make a motion to amend Dan's motion to include the unique shape? Topography.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll amend it. I'll amend my motion to include Jim's, uh, suggestions.
All right. We've got an amended motion. Is there a second on the amended motion?
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. All in favor, um, James, I'll, I'll start with you.
I'm in favor.
Dan?
In favor.
Brad?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So we, we have a unanimous decision granting the variance requested. Um, there is an appeal period. Um, Bethany, keep me honest on this one. I think it's twenty days, right?
That's correct.
So there, uh, if you, if you were to do anything with between now and the end of the appeal period, you'd be doing it at your own risk. And, uh. But your requested relief has been granted.
Thank you.
All right. Bethany, anything else? There's nothing else on the agenda, right?
Um, that's it. And then we'll meet back, um, next week.
Okay.
Is there a case, I, what's?
Uh, yes, the Verizon Wireless case, uh, continuation.
Oh.
About the meeting minutes, uh, Phil.
Um, were those on this agenda?
You had sent them to us this morning, I think.
I think they're just for review. This meeting was just for this variance.
Okay. So we'll just deal with that next week.
That's correct.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Okay, guys. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.